We'll begin our Rules Committee meeting, Open Government Committee, committee of the whole for December 11th. And we'll start with a review of the December 17th draft agenda. Oh, and I should mention, we're all here, so there's a quorum. We'll start with a review on pages four and five for any changes. Pages six and seven. Pages eight and nine.
We're going to defer 12.12E, just the Clean Energy Commission item to January.
Okay.
And on 2.11, we have the dollar amount filled in now for the final agenda, $600,000.
Okay, great. Do you need us to make that amendment on the?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Excuse me, on 3.3, can we ask for a time certain for the civil service interview? Not a time certain, but like not before.
Not before 1:30.
No, we just, we typically put them towards the end of the day. We can leave it in place.
This is going to be a fast meeting.
Okay, I'll just tell her to be there at 1:30.
That's a good idea. Okay. Pages 12 and 13, is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay.
You can move it to the last on the agenda.
Any changes to pages 14 and 15?
We have to come back at 6:00 anyway?
Yep.
Oh, well then, if the afternoon's going to be short, we'll just put her first.
I'm happy to keep her first, I just wanted to know what time to let her know.
Well, we'll let the maker of the motions do on that question. Pages 16 and 17. And pages 18. Okay.
So we have to come back.
We have an add sheet too.
We have to come back at 6:00 because of 10, just for the consent calendar, or there's one other change that was made?
Item 10.1F has been moved off of consent to be renumbered to 10.3, so there is one non-consent land use item.
So we have to come back at 6:00 for 10.3?
Stretching the bounds of the chappy room.
So these were doing the general plan amendments, so those were all noticed for the evening, even though they're on consent. Mr. Beekman, please tell us. Can we turn on that mic perhaps? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, words from the public, hi. To, there was a few items on this agenda I wanted to mention. Item 2.7 is the purchase order with Econolite for traffic signal controllers. It's an $800,000 kind of contract, and I just wanted to mention again, you know, to practice the idea that it's, you know, traffic controllers for as much good as they're doing for the city and the bus lines and stuff right now, there is a certain, they have a certain surveillance capability that, you know, should be of interest, and I hope it can be okay to just be able to say that in public more often, and it's okay to say in public, and that it can work as the ideas of minimal use of technology, and we may not have to rely on so much surveillance with these kind of issues. I'm not positive, but it's just a thought to say here. For item 4.3 is about the multi-purpose, the public purpose bonds issued by the Joint Powers Authority for moderate income rental housing. This issue is being deferred, and it was also deferred at the VTA. Thank you, I think, very much for wanting, you going to look deeper into this issue, and I will talk more about this issue on the public record. Thank you for this deferral. And to conclude, is that my two minutes? Twenty seconds, thank you. Yeah, with about 20 seconds. You have a process in the beginning of the agendas where you have approval of council committee minutes, and this is something I hope that I can talk to yourselves about a bit more often, about how this can be a more open public process. If I can't do it at the end of this year, maybe by the beginning of next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's also some ads on consent, a point committee's attention to. Is there a motion?
So move to approve the agenda for Tuesday, December 17th. For item 2.11, put in the number $600,000, and for item 2.12E, defer that to, what was the 7th or the 14th?
14.
Thank you. In addition to a sunshine waiver for an add sheet for some consent items.
Second.
All right. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Okay, B1 is review of study session agenda on equity work. Mr. Beekman?
This has been months in the works, and so thank you for having this session this Friday. When it was brought up here a few months ago, the memo process, it tried to spell out how you're going to talk about this issue. You know, with my own limited understanding of things, you know, I'm very hopeful about how, you know, to return to initial ideas of what equity was about when it was first developed as a term. So I'll be interested to see how that works, and that, you know, equity is an issue that is being worked on throughout the Bay Area and throughout, you know, the West Coast, and, you know, it's a shared process. And the previous memo, and there was a meeting here about it, the memo was written in a way that made it kind of like an isolated, this is just a San Jose issue, and it is a large, important issue, and San Jose is putting in its two cents in what, how to define the future of equity, and I hope we can do a good job. And good luck in your efforts this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
I had a question about the agenda. The memo that was approved by the council explicitly called for the creation of equity screens through the budgetary process, at least with regard to that limited subset of budgetary items, we'd be able to sort of, be able to start the work of being more intentional about equity in budgetary allocations, and we identified a few different areas, and I'm curious why we wouldn't discuss sort of the progress the staff has made on that direction as part of this.
Mayor Liccardo. There we go. Lee Wilcox, Chief of Staff of the City Manager's Office. A lot of that is really going to take place on the second study session, February 13th, more of the how we're doing it.
Okay.
I'd say a lot of that work, just to update the council, a lot of the items that you identified and which was approved by the council, your June budget message, as well as a host of other, whether it be policy areas or programmatic areas in departments, are starting to flush that out. We're using a term equity framework, like a set of questions to go through, so we'll start to introduce that and the progress that's been made, and the other tools available for how we'll do the work in February. This one is much more focused on kind of the what and why it's important.
Okay. And can you tell us a little bit about Julie Nelson and Leon Andrews?
Yeah, Mayor, Julie Andrews works with an organization called Race Forward, and Leon Andrews works with the National League of Cities, and those are two distinct organizations that have kind of taken on kind of the issue of equity, but specifically equity in the context of local government. And that's an important point to make, because, you know, when you take on the subject of equity, it could mean, you know, equity means so many, it can mean different things to different people, right? And you can go so many different ways with this topic. What we're trying to do, starting with this study session, is to really reframe the issue in the context of local government. What can we do to impact our city? What can we do to address the issues that we have in our neighborhoods, in our city? And so both of those organizations have a specific focus on local government. As I mentioned, Julie Nelson is with Race Forward, Leon Andrews, National League of Cities.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, on the motion, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm wondering, is there an opportunity for a public comment during that study session? Typically, we do have at the end of the study session.
There will be a public comment, yes. We'll use the same format as for study sessions, yes.
Thank you, I didn't see it in the agenda that I got earlier this week, but I was looking for it, but I'm glad that it's there now. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we're actually legally required, aren't we?
Yes.
I thought so.
Okay, so we'll follow the law. Any other questions? All right, on the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Ronda, G1, no, no consent, G2, our city auditor, no.
We have D1, Deardong Station, setting up study session.
Oh, how did I skip that? I'm sorry, forgive me.
One note, we need to have the title read, Deardong Station Concept Plan Decision Number Three Study Session.
That's included in my motion.
And if I could just kind of add a little context in terms of what we're going to do here, so this is on a regular council day.
Yeah.
We wanted to get back to the council, though, in January, so we're going to attempt to keep the agenda light enough so that we can get through the regular items in the afternoon, and then set this kind of time certain at 6:00 PM, so that we can move right into it at 6:00 PM.
Will it be also time certain, start and end?
I mean, obviously the.
Midnight. Our standard study sessions have, are pretty much, you know, we abide by whatever time parameters, but it seems like when we do a study session in conjunction with a council meeting, it's pretty open ended.
I think our goal will be to, you know, bring forward, you know, a tight agenda, and certainly if the Rules Committee wants to kind of put a, you know, timeframe to it, I think we can work within that context. You know, our plan is the next week, which is Tuesday, February 4th, is when we would bring the decision making forward, so there's not going to be any decisions made at this meeting. So I think we would be able to stay within, you know, a two and a half, three hour timeframe for sure.
Did you have to add to, Jim Ward, Deputy City Manager, we clearly have a narrow range of information to focus on, we aren't going to have 130 slide deck, it's going to be narrowly focused around the outstanding items of information the council requested from the last meeting, and just some minor refinements. So we will narrow down the focus of the presentation, so we're covering just what was not covered fully at the last session.
Well, I'll put my faith in Mayor that he'll run a very tight study session and keep us within the proper timeframe.
I hope he does, too. Mr. Beekman, did you speak on this item?
Yes, would you, please, thank you. Thank you, yeah, I got a lot of cards today, thank you. For this Deardong Station item, I hope I can speak to a few of the planning ideas that you'll be considering. I prefer the raised track that hugs the freeways into San Jose and into Deardong Station. It's environmentally easier and aesthetically easier to me, and I like the two-track idea that, it's my feeling that, you know, the light rail and the freight and Caltrain can be on a separate track on the ground and just have the high-speed rail up on top. I know people want to meld that into one large raised track, you know, just as my opinion and feelings, that it can be negotiable, and the separations can take place, and then efficiency within the city can still happen as well. I, you know, I hope you can remember the ideas, just to get it out there, that, you know, there's still a few other ideas of, the Merced to Tracy line extension, and a second extension up through the west side of Interstate 5, just to have those options open as how you'll be discussing this with others in the state still, and to keep that open. And finally, about the EIR reports, I've just learned that this is an important subject that's going to want to be talked about here in San Jose, in Santa Clara County, for the next few years, and you've got to have those EIR reports out soon, and I hope it can be a real positive, good experience, what those EIR reports can be. And, you know, we're talking about the future of transportation and fossil fuel, it can be positive, we can make it really positive in being a leader, an example of what it can, what our future is possible of, with those good EIR reports. Thank you.
Thank you.
The light is rattling, don't let it rattle you.
I don't think it's supposed to rattle. That's not in the OEM, right? All right. On the motion, you know, I just wanted to broach one subject. You know, this is a concept plan, I know we've been calling Deardong Station, and certainly we refer to the building as Deardong Station, that's always been how it's called. I know there's been some discussion about whether we should be thinking about this as San Jose Central Station, and there's some other community partners have been talking about this, too. Is this time for us maybe to talk about it in that way? We're planning San Jose Central Station, and let's start using that moniker, and certainly Deardong is the historic building, and we'll continue to use that. Just raise that as a.
I think it's a good question, I think at some point we'll need to get to that, yeah. I would say, Mayor, that in the next phase, I think we're happy as staff to kind of bring that back, because I think through this next phase, we're going to have a better idea of the Historic Depot.
Yeah.
How we'll be dealing with that, with, you know, regards to larger stations. So I think in the next phase, I think that's something very worthwhile for us to address, because we will know more about how we'll treat the historic station in the context of the new, modernized, kind of redeveloped.
And the expectation is we would keep this, the existing depot in some form, right?
Certainly, we'll treat it appropriately from a historic manner and incorporate it in the right way.
Okay, so there would be Deardong within, yeah.
That's what we envisioned.
You know, every great city you go to in Europe has a central station, and they call it central station, that's what it is, and everybody knows where it is, and it's not hard to find on a map how to get to downtown, and just raise that as something for us to consider as we're using our own monikers going forward, and we'll have more public discussion. Okay, on the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Onto the public record.
Motion to file.
Second.
Mr. Beekman?
Hi, to further talk about this subject, as I did earlier, you know, there were some real nice letters that talked about, you know, the housing income, housing plans with the help of, I guess, the VTA, and I'm really impressed that you guys are able to pull back the reins a bit and rethink this project a bit, and, you know, I just, I've been to a few VTA meetings recently, and it just really occurred to me that they weren't talking enough about, you know, very low income and extremely low income housing, and the ideas of mixed income housing, and, you know, within these new plans, and interestingly, at the same time, you decided to pull back and retalk about this issue. I know working partnerships, you'll be working with them on this subject, and, oh, and to mention CASA, CASA Housing Advocacy, like six months ago, they were commissioned to do, the MTC was basically saying the same thing a year ago, and they commissioned CASA to understand, to make reports about what can be better ideas of mixed-use housing, and, and so, please remember that name and the studies CASA's been doing. And, you know, Santa Clara, the city of Santa Clara, they've developed some interesting ideas, and, you know, there's a real interesting possibility what San Jose and the South Bay is growing right now, and, yeah, if it's time to really learn how to quietly and patiently open that up, I hope we can do that now, and, again, just be a good example of what is good humanity in practices. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on item, that's on E, we have a motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, onto G2. Now Joe is here. Sorry, Joe, called it prematurely.
So I have our monthly report, Joe Roy, City Auditor. So we issued two performance audits in November, one was the Team San Jose Performance Audit, which you heard yesterday at council. We also issued our Technology Deployment Audit, which was an update of an audit we did in 2016. That was heard at the Smart Cities Committee earlier in the month, and it's scheduled to go to the full council in January. Information on the set of other projects on our work plan is included in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions and ask that you approve the report.
Motion to approve the report?
Okay, any comments? Mr. Beekman?
Hi, being, you know, Technology Deployment, I hope this can allow a certain latitude to speak on technology issues for this item.
Actually, we're specifically on the auditor's work plan.
For the Technology Deployment, that includes Technology Employment.
Just on the work plan.
On the work plan itself, okay, I'll try to keep it within that focus. There was talk about, you know, new parking developments, and that will involve ALPR use, possibly, in the future. The VTA has just been doing some incredible work with the ALPRs that they will be using, and they are narrowing down from 180 days to 90 days data collection for commercial usage. That 90 days can be narrowed down to another 45 days within the next few years, and that's with the work of the European GDPR and California CCPA, I guess, you know, the California records data collection help. Something is really hopeful and positive and exciting and innovative, and it's about civil rights and civil protections. I mean, it's like fun and exciting to work on that stuff, and it can just really bring in a really good efficiency and a really good practices. And for your procurement process, you know, I always try to say, I hope this can be, to use civil rights and civil protections as part of your introduction to the city, to how to introduce people, to work for the city, and how the technology will be deployed within the city, I think it has to be a part of the innovation mix, and I hope it just can be more upfront, and when you talk to people about it, and it can be in the reports more, and it's good stuff, and it's enjoyable, and I try not to knock you too hard, I know you're trying to work on it, I hope you can have patience as I expound my love for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, on the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Thanks, Joe. Okay, item three is external quality control review of the Office of the City Auditor, and that requires an independent auditor's report.
I'm here to present that.
You're going to present the independent auditor's report? That doesn't seem that independent, does it?
So in accordance with the city charter, the office is subject to an external review of its audit practice once every two years, and this was recently done at the beginning of November, with auditors from the city of Austin, Texas, and King County, Washington, coming and reviewing our work. They pulled a sample of our projects, reviewed our policy and procedures, and audited the auditors, basically. I'm happy to report that they found we were in compliance with government auditing standards. They were, they are auditors, of course, they had suggestions for improvement in areas of documentation in one area of our work. And so their report and our responses include in the packet, there's the standard, just, you know, the, we've reviewed and you're in compliance, and then there's like a sort of management ladder type response, report with those, you know, what we've done well, where's that one area of improvement, and then my response, and so that's in the packet. I ask you to accept the report, and I'll answer, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Third.
All right.
Congratulations.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Well, Joe, thanks for enduring a scathing audit. Onto item four, annual merit increases and additional executive leave for council appointees. So there's a resolution attached there approving a pretty across-the-board 2.5% merit increase for all of our appointees. And with additional leave.
I have one question.
Yes.
How much, how much leave do they have already?
Great question. Dave, how much leave?
How much leave do you have, Dave?
So all of executive staff get a base 40 hours, and that's in lieu of no overtime, and then through the merit system, up to additional 40 hours. So this matches that process, so it's up to two weeks total, if you're through the performance program, granted that additional week.
And that additional week has to be granted every year?
It's through the performance program, so the way, so the two and a half and the additional five days is all, for all management employees in the entire city are granted through the performance program.
Oh, okay.
The managers, other than the appointees, all get one week of executive leave through the Unit 99 agreement. All the managers also have another week that's available to them, and the appointee determines which managers get the additional week, and that's why you also get to decide whether your appointees get the additional week on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, okay. Other questions or comments? All right. There was a motion, right?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Item five, council direction on cost development report workload assessment. Hi, Kim and Chris, do you have anything you want to tell us?
Good afternoon, Kim Wallace, Deputy City Manager, here with Chris Burton, Deputy Director, and you may recall, on November 6th, the City Council gave us direction to return to the Rules Committee with a workload assessment on potential additional analysis of the impact of development standards, zoning restrictions, and the development review process on the cost of residential development. I think, you know, Cost of Residential Development is a study we recently updated, we intend to update annually. So the good news is, we've done that workload assessment, a large number of the items we would consider green light, greenlit, greenlighted, because as the memo starts and continues on page two or three, these are issues that are currently being worked on through the Housing Crisis Work Plan, the General Plan Four-Year Review, or other processes. So you can see things like parking requirements and height maximums, density limitations, commercial requirements, the list here, these are things we're already engaged with in the course of doing work previously directed by council. So those we would all green light, and would certainly, in the next Cost of Development Report, add additional narrative that describes that in the report, and bring that to council so you can see the full picture. The second part of this, you can see on page five, we would suggest that it's a yellow light, because if council wished us to try to quantify in a very specific way some or all of these things, that would require a different kind of analysis for the cost of development. So what we would need to do, instead of doing what we call a conceptual pro forma model, which is sort of an average look at a set, a type of building in a particular case, what we could do is think about a very specific site and a very specific building and design, and then do the analysis. Analysis would have to be done with a lot of. Analysis would have to be done with a lot of specifics about the nature of the site, the location, the nature of the building. And we could do that. We estimate that adding that kind of site-specific building analysis would probably cost on the order of $200,000 in terms of a new, a different kind of consultant report, but it would be possible. So we've yellow-lighted that second part.
Okay. All right, any questions?
So on item, on page five, item number two, I think it just, why wouldn't you put this through the budget setting? Because it looks like you just need more money or something for it, right?
I think we would think it's appropriate for priority setting, just because it's a significant body of work, and we would ideally want to get some sense of where does this fit with the other items that we've been directed to do, both in the policy priority setting process and other items like the Housing Crisis Work Plan. If it was prioritized, then we would recommend funding it through the budget process. So I believe we have priority setting coming up in early 2020, so that would happen first.
Still make it, it would still make it then.
And if it was top-ranked, then there would be time to fund it through the budget process.
Understood, thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions?
This needs to go to council?
No, I don't think so.
No, this is the prioritization. Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, well, thanks, everyone. We're on to open forum. Mr. Beekman?
We're here at the end of 2019, and I thank you that, you know, I think this fall, you know, we've really seen the ideas of human rights and civil rights. They can have a more important part in how, in our decision-making, and it can be respected. And in terms of business, you know, those words just are kind of like, have to be couched, and they have to be, you can't say those words really out loud. And we're learning how we can, and it's nice. And I thank you, you know, in that you're trying to move that along so we can, and it's sometimes difficult, and, but you're trying, so thank you. The same can go with my technology hopes. You know, there's a really good civil rights and civil protections that go with it, but it really has to be couched in a lot of other issues of commerce, basically, first. And, you know, I just, I hope we're learning how it can be easier and more enjoyable, and it's just a, it's just a nice way to do business. And for ourselves to reinvent that and redevelop that is important, and good luck in those efforts to do that in 2020. I think there's been so many years of good rules, good guidelines, and good dialogue, and good organization of those guidelines, and good principles. You know, I think we can address, you know, war, we can address shock and awe, we can address, you know, disaster capitalism and its, you know, politics. I think we're at that point. We're at a good, good point in our lives. And so good luck to all of us in 2020. And, you know, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman. Happy holidays to you. Means adjourn.